Okay. Hopefully, we don't go too much. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee hearing. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, and Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Today, we have a hearing for legislative oversight, 21-0015. Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations for the purpose of requesting the Fire Chief to present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill is sponsored by myself, and I want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Ramos has joined the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we'll jump right into agency reports with the Fire Department.
So, good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter. Nice to see you all. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for taking the time to see yesterday. For the record, my name is Assistant Chief James Matts of EMS Assistant Chief. I'm joined by?
Ben Launer, Medical Director, Baltimore City Fire Department.
And if it's okay, I'm just going to go right into the PowerPoint slide and flash through.
It's great.
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Jelonda Johnson, Baltimore City Fire Department EMS.
Good to see you. Thank you.
So, I'm going to go a little bit off the rails on these first couple of slides. I wanted to point out, for the last few meetings that we've had together, we're talking about these dashboards, dashboards, dashboards we're putting together. We're going to see a lot of dashboards throughout today, but I wanted to point out, right from the get-go, that the dashboards really take us to another place. We're doing, we strongly support the data-driven decision-making, which is really driven by a lot of this data. The things that are really nice about the dashboards is that, one, they're real-time. They're also transparent, and I have to really give, point out that Baltimore City Fire Department's IT and data group, they spent a lot of time putting these dashboards together. The data that they pull out is actively pulled from our computer-rated dispatch, First Watch, and our Elite, which is our patient care reporting system. This is just an example of the 911 diversion. There's actually eight dashboards. The last two are more informational. When you go through them, one of the other dashboards that I just pulled out that we didn't do was one of the clinical metrics. Dr. Launer has a bunch of clinical metrics that he runs through and he looks at, you know, day after day to make sure that the performance is up to where they're looking at for the performance of our units, especially to do some quality assurance, quality improvement-type work. And I'm going to head right into community metrics, which is one of our first dashboards. This dashboard gives us a good opportunity, a snapshot of what's going on around the city in terms of our EMS response. It not only breaks down the highest incidence of calls per neighborhood, but it also breaks down like our highest type of call determinant. As you can see from these call determinants, the 06D call, that's like a breathing problems call. The next highest would be sick. Anything that says 20 sick is six is a sick call. Oh and down, 31 will be fainting or unconscious, 32 is a person down. But it's nice as it broke down. I want to point out, we also talked, last time we had this council hearing, I did the calendar year of '22 for this, complete calendar '22, to look back at and see what we were seeing through that.
Question for the 06 breathe call, do we have a breakout or a relative sense of how many of those are overdose-related or drug-related?
They vary from call to call. That's the other problem we have a lot of times, and you'll see some of these other slides. We actually track opioid overdoses. A lot of times, people ask us, hey, can you go ahead and tell me how many deaths occurred due to opiates? There's no way for us to do that, unfortunately. The only way we know opiate deaths, it has to go to the medical examiner and they run some blood tests. We can, the way we've had the system pull out our overdoses, we look for patients that react to the administration of naloxone. And naloxone only works on an opiate-type call. We also look in the narrative for the word Narcan or naloxone, and that's how we use our numbers. And this is the same thing where we give you the, for calendar year '22, I ran through a bunch of our most popular things. For calendar year '22, the highest incidence of traffic accidents actually occurs downtown. It's no shock, it's where we have most of the people coming in for business. The next area is Frankfurt. Frankfurt is an extremely large area, so a lot of times Frankfurt goes to the top because of the size of it. Plasque Industrial Area comes next, Bel Air Edison, and then that's closed out with Broadway East. Yes, ma'am?
Is South Baltimore reflected on here? Where?
It doesn't make the accidents in the top 10. So, for the calendar year, it will come into some later slides.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, Coldstream Homestead, Montebello is the same. It's a red. That's the same.
Cardiac arrest incidents. The cardiac arrest incidents, the highest incidence for calendar year '22 occurred in Upton, followed by downtown, Brooklyn, that's our south. Frankfurt came next, and then Sandtown Winchester, followed by Carrollton Ridge, one of our top five or six.
And when you say cardiac, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Cardiac arrest.
Please, go ahead.
When you say cardiac arrest, is that, what's the definition of that? Is that the traditional definition? Is that?
Non-breathing cessation of breathing and cardiac function. So, we're doing the most advanced life support we would do, which we would put people on monitors, innovate them, give them medications and such.
Do you all track, like, so for instance, in some of the communities, we're seeing that Narcan, like, they're not getting to that full state of cardiac arrest, they're getting to that beginning stage. Are you all tracking that? Okay.
We track that. There's a lot of things we put on the forward-facing dashboard of the Open Baltimore. We actually track number of Narcan and naloxone administrations. We also track leave behind, which is very prevalent. We're doing the leave-behind kits. We're actually seeing more, I don't want to use the word flush, but they're seeing a higher incidence of people having Narcan on the street. The next slide would be calendar year '22, number of sick cases. The largest incidence of sick cases, which by the way is our lowest incidence, our most common call, which is a 26 card, which is sick. You're going to see a lot of the larger areas with that. Frankfurt's going to be one of them because it's a larger area, followed by downtown, Bel Air Edison, Sandtown Winchester, and Upton. Trauma, the next neighborhoods that we have, the highest incidence of trauma would be in the Frankfurt neighborhood. There was a total of 87. Carrollton Ridge, followed by Brooklyn, South Baltimore, Bel Air Edison, downtown, and Central Park Heights. The opioid data, we tracked it for calendar year '22 by neighborhood. The highest number occurred, 287 occurred in Sandtown Winchester, followed by downtown, Upton, Penn North, Carrollton Ridge, and then Bel Air Edison, rounded out the top six. I think this is the last one or two slides with the pictures. Low acuity, which is our lowest priority, or, you know, the kind of calls we can divert or reroute to other locations. The highest incidence of low-acuity calls in calendar year '22 occurred downtown because of the surge in population with people coming down here to work, followed by Frankfurt at 1,507. Bel Air Edison came in third at 1,064, and then Sandtown Winchester at 884. Then the last heat map that we're going to use and go over today is all EMS incidents, which is the counted all incidents broken down by neighborhood. The highest incidence of all EMS incidents, again, occurred downtown because of the influx personnel. Frankfurt came in second at 3,754. Bel Air Edison at 2,848, and then Sandtown Winchester at 2,592. And then Upton was the top five at 2,481.
Just want to jump in with a question here. There's a lot we just kind of went over. I'm really curious, and we don't have the data here to tell us, but I'm curious, have we seen any sort of change in rankings or any spikes between relative neighborhoods over the last couple of quarters? Has any of that changed, or has it been largely predictable?
Surprisingly, it's been very consistent. Some of the stuff I'm going to go over later on gets into some of the population health outreach that we're going to be doing, and historically, the same neighborhoods come up and again. And I don't understand for like our high utilizers, for example, we're going to talk about, for some reason, 21215 is one of those peaks. Now, I'm going to have people in there, and I'll be able to get a better handle on what the reason for that is, but there's a wide variety of reasons that we have those super-users. But I'm going to have some slides with numbers for a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
And any type of diversion programs related to those high utilization? But that's in the program.
Exactly. So, as we had done in the past, we always go over our top five advanced life support and our basic life support type calls. The highest incidence, again, would be on difficulty speaking, which would be our sick card. There's actually 7,514 incidents. It's actually down from 2021. Next, they're followed by, the next two are actually overdose-unconscious type responses. Combined, there were roughly about 6,000 of those, 3,960 incidents, and then 2,381. The fourth most prevalent type of call is chest pain with difficulty speaking. That accounts for roughly 2,200 calls per year in 2022. And then they're rounding out the last five would be breathing problems, not alert, and that's 1,985, which by the way is pretty common. That's a major comment. What you're going to find out with our basic life support calls, the most common call you're going to see, once again, is that 26 you're going to see, that is a sick. That's a general, I'm sick call. You might see some accidents in there as well. The top two cases are sick unwell. That accounts for roughly 9,500 incidents for the top two of the basic life support calls. 5,193 of the 26 Alpha 10, and then another 4,551 for the 26 Charlie O2. The 29 card is a vehicle accidents, they're very prevalent. You're going to see quite a few of those, there's 4,222. Person down, man down, woman down, that's another very common call. We get a lot of times, you can get there, somebody could get up and leave, or somebody's sleeping or something like that, and there's about 3,800 calls a year for that in 2022. And then the last type, again, is the 26 card, which is our sick card. That's a not alert sick, and that's 3,582 calls in 2022.
And then sort of another general question here, for the out-of-service time, for the like average out-of-service time for some of these calls?
For most calls?
Yeah.
Roughly about an hour, but that number's been going up quite a bit. You're going to find in some of our stuff, and I'm actually going to talk about call volume in a minute, what we're finding is, in 2020, we were going back to pre-pandemic levels. I'm starting to see the call volume getting back in those areas. Remember, it went down, and it's starting to trickle back up, and that's what we're seeing there.
Okay.
And the call volume in calendar year '22, there was a total of, there's incidents, responses, and transports. Incidents are, there's a unique number for every call. Responses, they're like a cardiac arrest, for instance, you're going to have an ambulance there, you're going to probably have a supervisor and a company, so you'll have three people on one call. So, unique incidents in 2022, we had 100, just over 160,000 incidents in 2022. Responses altogether were 167,000. That's because multiple units respond to those calls. And then I also had the suppression units combined on there as well. Ben, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. I would just say that we are continuing the trend of one of the most highly utilized EMS systems, and I think it's not lost on this esteemed gathering over here, that a lot of this is related to the interaction between the social determinants of health and access. So, consistently, we are up there with Cincinnati, New Orleans, Detroit, but it is an exceedingly high number. If you look at the, if you look at the numbers through which people, I think for every thousand persons, there's like 333 calls to 911, so it puts us in the top three systems with utilization in the country. And that's a continuing trend for the past three years.
And how does that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And how does that translate into the staffing model for the 911 call center? Like, are we adding people? Are we training new people? Are we putting new people in the pipeline? What's the plan for that?
There's a lot of things going on. There's no one magic bullet that's going to bring that down. What we're trying to do, and we're going to talk about it in a little while, the trick with the call volume is to shave off that low-acuity percentage. I think we just did some numbers, and it's roughly just over 33,000 low-acuity calls last year alone. We can divert those 33,000 calls, you can decant, take some of the pressure off the system, get people moving more efficiently through. We're also looking at things, and we're going to talk about it in a little bit, but a nurse in the 911 center, have a nurse triage line, having that population health outreach to go ahead for some of our loyal customers, our super-users. I was trying to use a nice word, but yeah, we have some of that we're trying to address as well. So, there's a lot of things out there. This is one of the two operational dashboards that we had put together. I understand these are real-time now. What's really nice about these in terms of transparency, you can add any date range in there, and you can pull data out from it. It's really nice to kind of steer your model, not just do stuff as you think it's right, you're able to have some data to back it up. The first slide actually goes over our total responses by month. It also goes over total number of transports, which is just about 80,000 in this calendar year. It goes over average response time to sensitive EMS calls. It does both for EMS officers and medics. EMS officers will go on a high-acuity call, they average about eight minutes for their call, and the medics average about 10 minutes on their call. Also, the median and 90th percentile suppression wait time. I tend to steer towards the 90th percentile when I look at like our offload from the hospital. People, a lot of people look at median time. Median time means you're doing your job half the time. 90th percentile, it means about nine out of 10 times we're able to get you, and that's kind of what I'm looking for, especially with things like hospital, getting people out of the hospital. I went too far. Sorry about that. The second metric that we have in here actually breaks down our transports by month. It also talks about our offload time that I was talking about. I'm happy to report, and we're going to talk about offload in a few minutes, but I've heard more discussion between hospitals and decision-makers and municipalities and jurisdictions. I've heard more discussion in the last few months than I've heard in 20 years. They've got, a lot of the hospitals acknowledge that there, there's a law called immeasurable that we'll talk about. But essentially, when we get to the hospital, it's the hospital's responsibility to get us offloaded. The longer we stay in a hospital, the longer we have the ability to respond to higher priority calls. We're trying to work that through, they're trying to make some standard policies. Dr. Launer's going to talk about that. But offload is getting better. They actually show trends. If you could see from the trend on this one diagram here, it's actually getting a little better. Trying to write about 50 minutes. They're talking about trying to get it down to 30. 30 would be huge for us to be able to get people down to 30 minutes, so. The next couple of slides are where we go over the call volume in general, like busiest daily, weekly, monthly, and so forth. For calendar year '22, our average daily calls is 441. We're down slightly from 2021 at 465. Weekly at 3,036, down from 3,200. And monthly, we average roughly about 13,400. Peak time of the day, the biggest busiest time of the day for us is really between 12 and 6 at night in calendar year '22. Mondays are the busiest day. I don't know why Mondays are. I think everybody waits through the weekend until Monday to go to the hospital. There's a lot of problem with that in hospitals, too. And if on Mondays? Yeah. The time of the month is the end of the month, and the busiest month of the year is August, which is our war months. We're also talking about average call volume, looking at it between '22, '21, and '20. You can see from '22 that we were averaging 2,441 incidents a day. We're really around 2020 numbers here. I will tell you, in 2023, I've been watching it very closely, they're starting to get back to pre-pandemic numbers, so they're going up significantly. Once again, we went from, that year we averaged 160,886 incidents. There's 169 the prior year, and in 2020, we were at 160,000. So, we're really relative to what 2020 numbers look like. The next display is a heat map of our busiest time of the day. Years ago, when we did our peak time, our peak time was actually about 9 to 9, which you'll find now from the heat map, at least from 2022, our busiest hours really starts up right about 6:00 in the morning. It cuts off right about 10, 11, 12 at night. Really, 11 o'clock is where it did from this particular map. But again, that steers decisions on what do we put, where do we put people and units on the road. EMS unit response times. The transport median response time was eight minutes and 48 minutes in calendar year 2022. The medic time was eight minutes and 39, and the AMBO was right at nine minutes. In the prior year, the transports were at 8:32, so we went up slightly from '21 to '22. The medic's median time went from 8:24 to 8:39 in '22. That went up slightly, too, as did the AMBO time from 8:51 to nine minutes, so a couple of seconds difference. Fire suppression response to EMS calls. The median suppression response time to EMS calls was 5 minutes and 50 seconds in calendar year 2022. It was 5 minutes and 38 seconds in 2021, so that's climbing up a little bit as well. Median wait time for EMS is about 7 minutes and 49 seconds. That was at 6 minutes and 48 the prior year, so it's going up slightly as well. And unfortunately, we're going to talk about unit-hour utilization.
Can we go back a little bit?
Sure. What do you want?
To the last slide. I was looking at the 90th percentile. 29 minutes.
Correct. 90th percentile is 29 minutes, and that's, the problem with some of the numbers, and going forward with a lot of the different programs we're putting in, the idea is, if it's a low priority call, those people need to sit and wait while the people that have the higher priority, like the cardiac arrest or the trauma or the bad car wrecks, they go before them. If we're doing a really efficient system, those people wait, or you're going to send a BLS call, or you're going to divert them to, you know, an urgent care center or something like that. Unfortunately, yes, some of those calls are waiting. Part of that is due to pandemic offload, things like that, that we're having problems with. Part of it is, it's really not a good indicator, because we want to see some of those diverted calls, those low-acuity calls to wait a little bit.
I see.
So.
Anything you want to add there?
So. You, I'm sorry.
I'm going to hold my questions.
Okay. And then this is the next slide, and if you want, I can break after this, is the unit-hour utilization. Unit-hour utilization, what that is, it's a measure, is how busy and how, how much are you working your units? In a very efficient unit-hour utilization, you want a rate of about .25 or .33. It's about a quarter to a third of every hour your unit should be running. The other three-quarters or two-thirds, you should be preparing for the next call, eating, doing reports and such. Unfortunately, in Baltimore City, our unit-hour utilization rate is at 63% or .63. The prior year, we were at .61, which means we're working harder and longer to get into calls. Overall, our transports were at 63%. Medics were at 65, and AMBOs dropped slightly to 55. That's your advanced life support versus your basic life support.
And forgive me, can you explain one more time? I was looking at something else, as you were explaining the utilization. What is the?
Unit-hour utilization. There's really no definitive what you're looking for. In an ideal system, you're looking for a .25 to .33. It means about a quarter of a third of every hour you're running your units, on average. We're doing two-thirds of every hour our units run on average, which means the equipment never gets a break, the people never get a break, you never get a chance to write reports or that kind of stuff. We want to try to take that unit-hour utilization down by doing some of the other things that Dr. Launer and I are going to talk about later.
Okay.
Then, sir, I have a question.
Sure.
With regard to our fleet, how are we in relation to like a fully-established fleet of EMS vehicles?
Vehicles, we're very good. They, I can't remember the exact number that was ordered. I want to say it was roughly 28 or 29. Is that right, Ben? Do you remember? The problem is that there's an 18 to 24-month turnaround on vehicles now, post-pandemic.
So, where are we in that timeline? So?
It's not in my area of expertise. I know they were ordered over a year ago, we're waiting for delivery. A lot of that's supply chain stuff that we have no control over, unfortunately. So, once that all comes in, we'll have one of the newest fleets we've ever had. But we're at the mercy of the supply chain with regard to avenues. So, and same thing happens with monitors. The cardiac monitors, they have chips just like vehicles do, they're running behind. They can take up to nine months or even longer to get delivery on some of the computer cardiac monitors that we use.
Yes. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, can we get these slides emailed to us? I don't see them on our inboxes. It's always helpful for us to go back to them, particularly as we're getting close to budget. The second thing is, on the utilization piece, the definition that's on the slide is different than what you said. So, the definition on the slide says, if you can put that slide back up, because I can't see the small print. But the, it says, the definition, the percentage of time in which a unit is assigned on an incident represented as a median across all units. That's different than what you said, which is the percentage of time out per section of an hour.
It's per hour, and I have one of the experts sitting in a couple of seats from me right here that actually does that. But what it is, Jake, you can add the seconds when you do that. Don't you break every hour into seconds?
Use the microphone. Use a microphone. Thank you.
Jake Mider, I'm a research operations analyst for the Fire Department. We actually calculate it out of the entire shift, so if there are 24-hour shift, we do the percentage of that 24 hours that they are out of service on a call, or for the units that are only the day shift, out of the total hours that they're in service, that they're on a call.
Right. So, okay, that makes more sense. So, it's really about, so just, Engine 31 is always out of the firehouse. So, they, you know, but so this rate is basically that, let's say this is Engine 31, that, oh, this is EMS. Okay, let me just say Ambulance 3. Ambulance 3, which is in the same firehouse, is out of the firehouse 55% of the time on a call. The rest of the time, they're in waiting for calls. That's what this is.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
This is an imperfect metric, because, and I think this is a nice segue into mitigation strategies, but you know, the general goal is that there are ambulances that have downtime. This is also, this is also affected by things like staffing. So, if you look across the board, and there are issues with this particular statistic, an EMS system that has a UHU of six or seven is quite busy, because there's also some downtime that needs to be incorporated on it. So, I think what's helpful for us is, you look at it as a trend, but it just affirms the fact that the city units are typically committed, which is, I think, a fairly consistent trend with respect to our EMS units.
So, this includes, so this 55%, again, just using Ambulance 3 as an example, if, say for instance, Ambulance 3 that day can't go out because they don't have enough staff, that's included in here?
It would be, because it's the number of staffed hours and the number of, the number of times or the amount of time they're actually committed on a call. So, you can't count a utilization hour if it's not staffed.
That's not an accurate number, then.
No, it's not. It's imperfect. UHU has a lot of issues. It's just when you look at EMS systems across the board, it's one of the surrogate markers of busyness that's commonly utilized. Totally, I totally concur.
Yeah. You need to find a new indicator.
Yeah.
To show how busy the units are.
So, and honestly, from the UHU perspective from a commercial company, you want that number higher if you're running somebody eight hours a day. You want a UHU of at least .5 if you're paying people to run X number of hours per day, not in a fire service or, you know, a fire delivery model. They're a little bit different. So, yeah, it's not, it's not a perfect model. It's hard to really get down what you're looking for. I had to do a lot of research to even find what is the normal, the ideal world. If you could get like .33, you'd be walking home.
Okay, but you're, you're not talking percentages here, you're talking about points. So, if we move the decimal point over, then you're actually seeing that the ambulances are at that .5. I mean, this is, this is as a percentage. And you're saying .3, .5, .6. So, you're talking about moving the decimal point over.
Place is for a percentage of an hour.
For the percentage. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear. So, it is, it is consistent, then, with what you're saying, that the system should have, or says that it's close to, you said .6. This is 55%.
For that type of unit, overall, the number is, is?
That's what I'm trying to get to, is that it, so, yeah, I'm trying to just figure that out.
Right. So, the, the overall average for the entire transport units is 63% or .63. Medics, the ALS, the advanced life support type units, they're much busier at .65 or 65%. And then the ambulances are running at 55.5.
Right, right, right. But you had just said that a very busy system is around that .6%. I meant 60%, .6.
Correct.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear on the numbers and what this is supposed to be.
I think it helps, and I think it also helps to understand, and we've presented this data in a couple of different ways. One of the things that's helpful is to compare relative volumes. So, if you look at our top three medic units, they're running about 6,500 to 8,000 calls a year, and that is extremely, that extremely surpasses similar, units of similar assignment in other cities. So, when you look at the, when you look at the volume, I think that's an objective number that you can compare. It's on the, it's on the, on par with Philly, Detroit, but 7,000 calls is just very difficult to sustain, and that's reflected in our retention and recruitment numbers.
So, the next thing we were going to talk about, if it's okay, was?
I actually had a question about manpower, where we stand with vacancies, because of course, there are two things at play here, one, our apparatus, two, the people who actually can be in the apparatus. I was curious what our vacancy rate is for positions.
So, the number of vacancies EMS-based is running roughly between 47 and 50 for EMS. I can't speak to the whole system. There's a lot of classes currently in school that are currently at the Fire Academy right now. Um, there's a lot of classes currently in school that are currently at the Fire Academy right now, um, that we're running through. The problem is, the, the well's kind of dry with regard to people coming into the system, and we have to actively work on recruitment with that. Um, I know in, uh, another jurisdiction that does paramedic classes that normally has twenty-five or thirty students, this year they have nine in Harford County. B-triple-C has five coming through the pipeline. So, that's a dramatically low number, and we're going to have to think what we want to do to be able to bring in some more of that, that advanced life support talent, um, whether we teach it ourselves, whether we bring in some EMTs, whether we look outside the states, because it's very active. I know when I first came out of school, I was getting letters from all over the country that they're trying to, to, to look for people, and we have to get aggressive with that.
Um, have, what are the, how are we thinking about recruiting right now? I know, um, because I, honestly, I've been asked this question of every agency. I know we're having trouble hiring people across the whole city. Um, I'm, I'm sure some of that is salaries, some of that is just, we're coming out of the pandemic and like people are, they want to be, I don't know, whatever.
Probably a combination of what you're saying, and not only is the salaries, I think, need to be looked at, you know, you need to actually look at possibly, you know, retention, recruitment bonuses, like a lot of people are doing. Um, we got to attract people to the business. A lot of people during a pandemic left the, the service. A lot of people retired, nurses left, um, for, for duff, different fields. Um, I think it's a combination of the two, but yeah, we've, we've definitely got to get work on it.
What is our retention rate, um, for, for the department right now?
I'm going to have to get back to you on that, I don't.
Yeah, that'd be helpful to know.
It's outside of me.
And then the other thought that I had was, as far as our cadet program and apprenticeships, um, have we started, you know, really kind of pumping in to that feeder model as much as possible? And if there's an opportunity to, you know, we're not, we're going to be dealing with this issue frankly probably for years. Um, we may be able to hopefully, possibly, I'll cross my fingers, solve it by hiring people from outside the city and the surrounding counties, but, um, looking at the police department, I know it's very possible that, that may not be the answer for us, but if we can start exploring, um, or leaning into some of the apprenticeship models and getting some more young people in, that could be something that could help us. Um, just kind of curious how.
They're, they're actively partnering with some of the high schools now. Um, that's, I, I don't really mess with that side of the academy side, but they're actively working with one or two of the schools right now on some students, um, to work through the system. Um, but those numbers are, are, it's a good start, I think we have to build on it. We did an apprenticeship model several years ago, um, that, that we, we had a little difficulty with and, and it kind of went to the wayside. Might be time to revisit some of those, their past practices to bring people in.
Please go ahead, Kim.
Good, good afternoon, Chairman, Councilmembers, Kim Washington, Baltimore City Fire Department. Um, the agency is actively working on recruitment efforts within high schools, high school program, apprenticeship program. We are also looking internally at our models to see if there are way, in the past, we used to do training ourselves. So, we are looking at the efficacy of doing something like that again, um, but also looking to partner with places like B-triple-C, um, Towson. Part of the, you know, sort of fallout of the pandemic is that people who are in the healthcare field and our EMS paramedics are in the healthcare, they're tired and burned out. So, we are looking to aggressively begin a new recruitment process this summer. It's the first summer that we will be able to actually get out more than we have been able to in the past. So, they are looking to actively go to community organizations, go out to community meetings. Um, the summer gives you opportunities with block parties and, you know, to be more visible and be more present. So, that is a part of the plan for this summer specifically, and looking for potentially, um, putting out a new list some point, I would say maybe mid to late summer, trying to capture the people who will have graduated, um, from high school this year. So, that's, that's kind of where we are with regard to recruitment.
I would, um, I, I, I was just going to ask, um, in, in thinking about, we, we do have an apprenticeship program. I know it's something that the committee, uh, explored, and I know one of the sort of back and forths on that was just the, the department's capacity to fully support that at a larger level. Um, I know we're going into budget season now, and one of the big questions that I have is like, how can we think about support for the department to make that a more robust program? And think, you know, two to three years down the line, when we can get more young people into the program, into the department, into these good jobs, and, you know, not have to deal with this problem in two to three years, or maybe in a different capacity. But i- if you guys could let me, you know, share with the committee your thoughts on what it would take to have a more robust program, it would be really helpful.
I would, um, I would offer just a couple of things. One of, one of the things that we, we should not be doing is reinventing this proverbial wheel, and I think it's so well said that, uh, we will be dealing with recruitment for quite some time. So, challenges are well-known, we have a high-volume system, we have an exceedingly high rate of attrition, we have call volume and a high rate of need. Uh, if you look around Maryland, one of the successful ways, and this is through discussions with Chief Johnson and Chief Stewart, is to create your own paramedic program. Now, I, I want to be careful about this because paramedics are a little bit different to grow than EMTs. So, all of these things in terms of growing your EMTs, um, we are doing quite well in terms of having classes that come in. The paramedic now is very different. Paramedic is where you have to partner with, uh, a body of higher education. There are very specific accreditation standards, and historically, uh, the fire department had challenges meeting that because you need clinical directors, you need insurance, you need dedicated medical direction. So, that is something that is on the table. When you talk about resourcing, that is an entirely different arm, and I, and I would respectfully suggest, um, we can get that data. Uh, Maryland, um, Montgomery County does this. They have, uh, two nurses, another medical director to help, clinical coordinators, multiple FTEs. And I think the key thing is to link that to service. So, if we, if, if let's say, we have the ability and the authorization to grow our own paramedic program and forge those bonds, we also have to have the incurrent investment in unfortunately, uh, money and personnel because it requires an entirely different setup than what we currently do with training. Uh, but there are other jurisdictions, including Howard County, Montgomery County that do this. Uh, Anarundel also does something where they allow their, their members to attend paramedic school on duty. So, there are multiple options. Uh, all of those come with cost and time, and historically, it's something that has not been a part of what we do to grow paramedics because you, you can no longer just do it from your jurisdiction because you, you want to teach it.
That, that, that's really helpful, and, um, I would love to have more of that conversation with you guys about what, what's sensible. And I know, you know, we don't have money abounding, but certainly we have problems abounding and know that this, this will be a problem continuously. Um, and if we could think, you know, down the line and how making certain changes today can help us in, you know, one, two to three years, it could go a long way.
I just wanted to add that, um, in case you all were not aware, part of the issue, EMS being its own division, and when Chief Matts introduced himself, he said assistant chief, we have a deputy chief now. Um, so that is starting to pan out. Uh, so, there are lieutenants and captains and all of that good stuff that goes along with, um, it becoming a top-level division within the agency. So, the changes are coming, and, and like, uh, Dr. Launer said, they are probably changes that will take two to three years, but we are putting the building blocks together to create a more efficient EMS. I think, you know, I would put us up against everybody, and some things are comparing apples to oranges, but where, you know, we have apple and maybe applesauce, like, let's figure it out.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And what a great, great transition of where we're going, where I was just going to head for. We're going to talk about population health right now and some mitigation strategies from some of those expansions we were able to go. I wanted to go ahead and explain some of the directions we're heading with some of that outreach that we have coming down. Um, just to remember, population health, you know, health isn't just going to the doctor. It's a combination of answering your social determinants of health, those things that you need outside of healthcare. Um, and the good thing about population health is we can make an impact on social determinants of health, reduce our call volume, improve patient outcome, go into the right resource, and then hopefully, um, improve our response times. Um, some of the things that we've been looking at doing, I know I've said it before, there is no magic bullet. Some of the things that we're working towards, one is ED offload and, uh, pathways. Tele-nine-one-one is very close, that's where we're actually going to be able to have a telemedicine option with our people. We're actually waiting for that to go to the Board of Estimates, so it's really on the fast track with us. Uh, nurse triage and then dispatch reform. Dr. Launer, I'll let you go ahead and talk about the next slide.
Um, so briefly, uh, just to add a couple of positives to this, um, we did have, uh, uh, I know Chief Johnson participated in what was formerly the Bloomberg Group. Uh, that resulted in a mayoral level, um, task force to nail down things such as offload. We have offload impla, we have offload, uh, pathways in place at most of the area hospitals, and that has resulted in, um, I think at least a downward trend. So, that is something that is good. We, we have a, I think, a good partnership with them. Um, so, just to echo one of the positives there. In terms of dispatcher form, uh, this is something that, um, as Ms. Washington did mention, as we become a, uh, top-level organization, we're going to be able to, uh, control our own determinants. And I have said, I think very clearly, my personal opinion based upon the evidence here, is that whenever you talk about diversion or utilization, you have to do it from the front. Now, this is a busy slide, but to distill this down, we, we have basically four years of data which suggests which dispatch determinants result in either no intervention by EMS or result in no hemodynamic instability. And again, this is something that has done well in North Carolina, in Oklahoma, in Texas, where you establish a threshold for, you know, what is a low acuity call? And you say, less than, if you want to be conservative, less than three, three percent of those calls will not have any co, um, complications. And that is how you build, uh, you, you establish the found, the foundation of the building blocks. So, you take the calls that are associated with no complications, and you start putting them through other programs. So, again, to mention, um, District of Columbia and other places, those go to a nurse triage line where you send, um, alternative resources. So, we just did that analysis. Um, we will be making recommendations to the fire chief and to the administration, and I'm hopeful when we have, uh, when, when we have some direction in terms of how that plays out, we'll be able to make recommendations about not refusing nine-one-one, but sending the appropriate resource. So, an analysis of, uh, it's now actually four years, but very interesting in that there's a very distinct subset of calls, specifically the, uh, twenty-six alpha calls, the patients that are found down, the one alpha one, which is the abdominal pain, the falls. We're, we're really sending a bunch of resources that probably are not necessarily needed. Um, so that is a big component, and we hope that that will be used to drive our initiatives, such as nurse triage and everything else. Um, so, in the planning stage, we still have tele-nine-one-one and dispatch, the medically informed dispatch, which is extremely important. Alternative transport has been a little bit of a hurdle because we have still not heard back. Uh, Maryland Medicaid has still not, um, responded in the affirmative about, well, they, whether they will pay for Uber. So, um, i- if you look at other programs, the cost of an Uber is down to, or in Lyft, not to be restricted, is down to about twenty-nine dollars. Um, the cost of an ambulance, whether we even get it reimbursed at the most basic level, is over two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars plus mileage. So, if Maryland Medicaid will not fund it, this may be another discussion where we can say, is it cost advantageous to, from the fire department, for example, and this is just an example, fund alternative transport? Because if you look at our history and our data, one of the biggest challenges that we have is when we give people other resources, when we give them alternative pathways, the challenge is always transport. How do you physically get them there? Um, and you can appreciate, obviously, it may not be the, in the best interest of these patients to say, take a bus if you're having a medical concern. So, this is something I think we're, as a fire department expands, we're really going to have to wrap our heads around how we do this. We still have more follow-up with Maryland Medicaid, but this may be something that we have to fund through an alternative mechanism. In terms of implemented and ongoing, just to segue down the line here, uh, we do have alternative destination programs, behavioral health diversion. Uh, we have a reinvigorated population health division, um, and that, that's some of the, that's some of the positive things that are existing.
I'm going to give, uh, member Porter an opportunity, you have a question?
Yes, have we engaged Uber in any way?
So, I think the, so I, I would defer to my colleague here, Chief Matts. Um, I think the challenge has been the issue of payment, so I am not aware that they have been.
The key right now, we actively use it with the, uh, mobile integrated healthcare program we use through, uh, University of Maryland. We'd be able to carry that through, like, like Dr. Launer was saying, we're trying to get Medicaid. Medicaid is coming to the table, they're a little slow. Um, they're slow and steady. Um, they're paying for us to be able to go to alternative destinations, like the stabilization center, like the urgent care centers. We're just trying to bring them along little by little and follow.
It may be worthwhile, they just have a new director at the state level, so it may be worthwhile to engage Ryan, who's the new director, and then, um.
Mike.
Oh.
It may be helpful to engage the new director, um, at the state level, he's just now coming in. And then also Uber, their headquarters is in Washington DC, and so, um, I can facilitate that contact with the regional manager.
Thank you.
Because that, like you said, that's a very, very big issue, and if there can be some collaboration there, we need to move sooner rather than later, as the summer months approach.
I, I understand that even during the, the pandemic, our doomsday option was to, to contract sedans. If I had to, I was going to contract with sedans and send a sedan somewhere. It's an option, it's just, you got to make sure you safely do it, and that's what Dr. Launer and the dispatch reform are actively working on right now.
The hospitals have done a very good job with that, so we do have some engagement on the MA, MAH health side, but I, um, would absolutely agree that the engagement between first response services, um, through nurse triage and other things is a little bit lacking. The good news is, this is going to happen, whether it's through that connection or whether it's through the, um, health information exchange that these nurse triage lines bring. But, um, I would concur that that's an area of vulnerability because that development of alternative transport is something that will support all of these initiatives.
Did you want to talk about?
Sure, um, the offload delay is always cyclical. This is something that we, it's extremely complex. As you know, Maryland's a global budget state, the hospitals are always busy, but we do have that, um, tracked in real time. Uh, we, we are seeing, um, a slight downturn, um, in the median and ninetieth percentile, but for this to be sustained, um, it requires continuing collaboration with the hospitals. So, I am happy to report that we have monthly and quarterly meetings with MIMS, um, and that has resulted in, uh, I think at least the, the, the last offload delay, uh, that came from the state, uh, that was the downtrend, hopefully that will continue, we monitor that constantly. Um, and we were successful in motivating the University of Maryland Downcount Campus to come up with an offload nurse, uh, and that's a place where they actually are dedicated to, um, fielding our ambulances. So, like everything else, it's complicated, but we do hope to see a sustained downward trend. I don't know if Chief Johnson has anything else to offer on offloads. I am trying to capture the, the contribution of everyone because I, I, I do want to say, this was a, we had meetings for a while, every week and every month, so hopefully we'll be able to reap the fruits of that labor, so thank you again for your help.
So, the population health unit that we have on the street, it's doing some soft trials right now. Um, we have the luxury of the, the lessons learned from the mobile integrated healthcare program with university. Some of the things that we learned from that, um, was that we're basically pigeonholed into just doing two type of transports. One would be the treat and release, which where we would do an advanced level provider and somebody like me, we treat and release free of charge. The other option was a transitional health program where we would transition people from hospital to home. What we're going to be able to do with this unit is do, o, offer a multitude of services. And some of those services, one, we're going to have scheduled visits, we're going to have an operations center that's going to be staffed, um, that'll help direct our people on the street. Um, if it's a low day, for instance, responding to opiates or outreach to opiate-type people, maybe we can address the high utilizers on this particular day. I'm going to talk a little bit more about high utilizers in just a few minutes. We also are looking for field referrals, there's a mechanism inside of our patient care reporting system where our members can refer a patient for outreach, um, which we'll also work with. Um, we're also going to work with our vulnerable adults. Um, the initial and follow-up discharges, that's going to be with pre-registered appointments with some of those people in those programs. And then I'm happy to report, um, one of the things we're also offering, some vaccinations to our homeward bound and vulnerable populations. We've actually vaccinated, as of this slide, was a thousand twenty-two people, it's actually up over twenty, it's like ten-thirty now, ten-thirty-one. So, we're actually making a little bit of a difference with things like that. The one thing to point out why this is successful, we have an established relationship with people on the street. The community knows who we are, they know our uniforms, it's easier for us to get in the door. A lot of problems that they have with some of the, um, people that come from the health department or from different agencies, they never can get inside the house, that's the one luxury we have. Um, one of the other things we're going to do is we're going to have roving units, going to offer a, a multitude of, uh, services. This is actually the maiden voyage of the mobile integrated healthcare, the very first day we had with the unit went on the street. Um, they're going to be able to self-dispatch, they're not going to be limited to just West Baltimore, they're covering their entire city. Um, they're going to go out and address overdoses, um, they can, you know, offer immediate assistance with things like people encouraging people. They can also offer a linkage between VCRI and crisis out, outreach, as well as nine, uh, eight-eight. Um, they're going to do some behavioral emergencies, and potentially, they can actually put one of those behavioral emergency people on the unit with them if necessary. Um, they're going to be, reach out for substance abuse, one of the things that we're looking at in the future, um, is buprenorphine, which is a treatment we can do if somebody wants to do, it's really, it's, it's a lot of boxes to check, we're actively working on it right now, but that's to come in the future. Um, clinician referral, that's where somebody on the street can refer a patient to the roving unit that is a lower acuity, potentially go to an urgent care center, and then. And then to address high utilizers. The other things that the roving units can assist with is alternative destination. Patients would benefit from treatment from urgent care or the stabilization center. Areas with high incidence and target areas, like you were asking about 21215 or South Baltimore is higher, to try to target. The one thing that's nice about the operations center where they're trying to set it up, they're trying to have, it's a large, interactive board. They don't really use smart boards anymore. We have these big TVs. We can actually track the CAD system and direct people into those areas right now. Patient assistance with things like social determinants of health, that's coming down the road. That's where we try to address things with slip, trip, or falls for the elderly. Go ahead and do some safety inspections. Offer some victim support for assault and then doing some trauma-informed care as well.
Two things. First, I just want to acknowledge Councilman Glover's during the meeting. And then two, I might have missed this as you were talking, how many roving units do we have?
I'm trying to get two out there now. We're going to start with one and work our way up. Just like the laundry list of services we're doing, we're going to start one or two things, get that right. Because I'm going to be honest with you, whatever I do, I always make a mistake in the beginning. Learn from our mistakes, adjust to what we have to, and start offering some additional services. One of the things that they're trying to do right now with like the opioid outreach, instead of just giving a box of naloxone or Narcan, they're trying to put things like in a brown paper bag so it's unmarked, they don't have the stigma of knowing what that is. Inside of that's going to be cards with available services. If they want people encouraging people, we can directly contact them. In the future, if they want treatment and we have the setup to use buprenorphine, we're going to look at that in the future. So we're going to try to do a couple of things at a time as the plan. One of the nice things, too, we have a community outreach arm of the fire department. We're also looking...
Oh, Chief, give me one second. I noticed Councilman Burnett has joined us virtually and he's got his hand up. Councilman Burnett, you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question on this. Are we, for the public health direct outreach work, are we tracking, I guess, the outcomes of each of these calls? I think it would be helpful for the committee to have this data. This is very interesting and I think pretty innovative work. I think it would be helpful for us to have some data for future hearings on how many times we administered these sort of alternatives, whether those were referrals or the way that you're dispensing medication in a very, I think, you know, harm reduction lens way. I think these are all things that we should be lifting up and tracking as best practices. I was just wondering if that's something that could be presented to the committee at future hearings?
Yes, sir. We actively have, the thing with metrics, it's a lot easier to put performance metrics in place before you do something. It's really difficult when you're already doing something. We've already put extensive metrics in place. We also have it set up with our patient care reporting system. They're going to be using Elite. There's actually an MIH or a mobile integrated healthcare arm where we can pull out information and data, data cells. The key is they're going to have hands-on people every day, and that's the key. Now, they might be a high utilizer today, it might be an opioid outreach tomorrow, it might be something like that. The other thing that's nice, and it kind of leads into the next slide, they're also, if the opportunity presents itself, they're going to do some population health awareness if it's the appropriate time, either the patient or the family, looking at things like leave-behind kits, hands-only CPR if it's appropriate, informational resources and handouts. The focus heat map, we're trying to focus on those target neighborhoods as best we can or as the day dictates. You've got to understand EMS is never the same two days in a row, so it might be really busy in Carrollton Ridge today, it might be in 21215 tomorrow. So they're going to try to be a little flexible in the deployment model. They're going to look at things like stop the bleed. And the other thing is this awareness training's not limited by age. Remember, a lot of these outreach programs, they kind of cut off on the age. We can reach out and touch children a little bit, too, which is really nice. It's not to overtake the community outreach that we're doing, it's to augment or support that in the day-to-day things. They target special events and things like that, so.
I'm curious, you know, to Councilman Burnett's point about harm reduction, and I'm glad we're taking those steps. I'm curious what additional information we're able to get in interactions with folks from overdoses? And if, of course, we do a leave-behind kit, but do we get any information from said person, phone numbers, emails?
If they want, and they want outreach and treatment, obviously, we do. We get all their demographic information for a report. Refusal, I'll get your name, your date of birth and so forth, number you can be reached at or area, because not everybody has phones, too. That's the other thing. Especially when you do the people encouraging people, that's one of the breakdowns, is we have the ability to be there real time. They can stay in the line a little slower if the people encouraging people are coming on their own or if we can have somebody bring them there. So there's a lot of demographics we can get. The only problem we're having trouble with right now is if there's a unique form, you know, like a unique PDF of some sort, I can't extract that. I have to do that by hand. That works, it's labor-intensive. The other stuff, we can create reports, have real-time dashboards for. Unfortunately, there's probably going to be dashboards in our future with that, so we can real-time track it, so.
I asked the question because one of the things I noticed when flipping through the preliminary budget book this year was the continued increase in opioid deaths. And I've been trying to think about what we could be doing. You know, what do we know about why that trend is contributing? I mean, of course, we know fentanyl, carfentol, so on and so forth, and that being mixed in is a big problem for us, I think, also a lot of mental health stuff. But one of the things I know we do a lot is we interact with folks. And I'm curious how often folks have had second, third, fourth overdose instances and it's finally the third or fourth that kills them. And if there are things that we can be doing in these interactions, of course, leave-behinds, of course, I'm talking to family and friends in the area so that they know how to respond next time they see an overdose. But if there's anything else that we could be thinking about to very specifically target the people that we know are having the addiction issues? And I know for certain our ambulances are getting there. So just a thought.
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I heard, this is great that there'll be the mobile units. We have been having an issue, BCRI is not up to capacity quite yet, and that has been a big issue when we call for a person in crisis. I'd much rather have an EMS response and not a police response. Right now, we're getting police response, okay? Because 988, right now, 988 is only taking suicidal ideation calls, okay? And I know that there's a lot of work trying to expand that to other topics. But we, honestly, I would much rather have an EMS call because you are a trusted member of the community. I mean, people trust the police, but you know how that goes. So I think that there's, we've got to work on that piece. Because right now, when we call 988, it is a police response, and that is not appropriate.
And I'll tag on to that. I think what we're finding is when there are overdoses, there are instances where people won't call because they are afraid that the police will show up. So just a thought there.
It's not even just for overdoses, it's for all crises. I mean, I have a constituent who's been in crisis literally for 20 years, and we can't seem to get him any help. And every single time somebody makes a call, it's always the police. Now, this particular officer has been trained on how to deal with this particular person. That's just not appropriate. And BCRI is just not, I mean, we're working with BCRI to get the capacity. So what I'm saying is, since you are working on this issue of diversions and trying to, you know, make things a little bit better, there's got to be a way to coordinate so that when somebody's calling 988 or 911 for these types of calls, that it's an EMS response or some, you know, and working through that. Because I know you're going to try to divert to BCRI. BCRI is only right now going to respond to suicidal ideation. And there's a lot of other crises out there.
Councilman, you want to let them?
Well, we had...
I'm sorry, and just for a little bit of background, so the previous budget season, I asked that question, and BPD's response that the officer that does respond has a social work background. They are currently building the operations to have a police officer and a social worker and/or a social worker-like personnel respond to it. The problem is, is the liability aspect, if something goes way left and it turns dangerous.
Right, right, right.
So I know that, you know, that may be something to bring up this next budget season of where they are as far as update regarding building that operation.
But I'm also just aware that, you know, if EMS is depending on BCRI, what we actually want you to do is advocate for BCRI to get better, you know, resources. Because what you're trying to do is have also a diversion, right? So we need your help to advocate for more resources and capacity for BCRI. And then the other question is, you'd said that there would be a behavioral person on these mobile units? How's that working?
In future iterations, we're trying to work towards that partnership. We're actively working with them. Dr. Loner is very active with them through the behavioral diversion program. Did you want to add anything real quick about the determinants and what?
I just wanted to respond, if I may, to a couple of things. So number one, thank you, Councilman Burnett, for talking about the data. This needs to be tracked in a dashboard because when you have limited resources and overwhelming need, we need to be able to target our initiatives. And I want to say, for example, if you look at high utilizers, the data is very clear that you can target the high utilizers all the time, and they're still going to call 911 because many of them are sick. For example, if you look at asthma and CHF and a lot of the things and a lot of the reasons why they have them, they are high utilizers precisely because they're comorbid. But I cannot agree more and more vociferously about the need for tracking. So we will bring that to the council and hopefully to City-Stad. With respect to diversion, I think the picture is a little bit more positive. The consent decree, as you all know, takes in many ways police out of that initial response. And if they do go, we have had a lot of good results in leveraging the CIT-trained officers. Now, I am not going to sit here and say that the police response is more appropriate, but to be very honest, a huge challenge is EMS, when they respond, the EMS system is also not very well-prepared. There's not a lot of crisis stabilization training and de-escalation training. And what happens here as a clinician is we get there, patients are either pre-contemplative, where they say, get me out of here, I don't want naloxone, and they leave, or we give them the option to go to the hospital. Now, the hospital and the emergency departments are also not very well-contained. So we need to look at this again as the call happens. And that's where I think it is very positive because although BCRI is focused, we have the stabilization center options. With the clinician in 911, we will be able to divert more calls. And there's also that's going live in June or July, they're working with police dispatch. And police dispatch is going to look at certain call types where they can divert from the initial police response. There's a law enforcement diversion program as well that's going on. So there's a lot of complex interplay. And I think the 911 system, even though it's certainly imperfect, is much better positioned today than it was even last year to match the patient crisis to the need. But it's interesting, we actually had a study with EMS personnel, and the latter study, which we did with Hopkins and the Light House, couldn't even be published because the data was so bad and our failure to link people to resources. And the police get this because the police also do not, I'm in those, I'm testifying in front of the federal judge every quarter, and the police don't want to be in those situations. But with due respect to my colleagues, I think they're doing a good job with about 30% of their force trained in de-escalation. And that is something, that is something, I think, that CIT program has a lot of lessons for EMS. So complicated, lots of parallel initiatives that are going on. And I agree with you, with your point about the ability to increase BCRI's capacity. I think at last count, they have now eight mobile crisis teams. And if you call them, and if we activate 988 and we deem that they're stable, they will send a mobile crisis team, whether or not the patient is eligible or whether they want to go is a different story. But definitely, definitely challenging. We need a lot more than leave-behind naloxone.
So I was going to just do a couple of slides on a high-utilizer research that we've done. So high-utilizers, there's really no definition. The state of Maryland defines a high-utilizer, because there's a lot of difference across country, but the state of Maryland uses five or more incidents in a 90-day period. In the period from January to March of this year, there was actually 1,504 high-utilizer incidents involving 203 high-utilizers, 60 called 10 or more times. And we actually go as far as break down the data to look at, you know, how often these people call. What's amazing from this slide is that there are six people that called 170 times in this three-month period. That's the ones that we're trying to reach out for and figure out what we can link with to try to reduce some of this. We actually go a step further when we look at the data. We actually look at, what are these people calling for? Like the top few ones, a pain, alcohol abuse, general malaise or sick, chest pain or behavioral. They're the big common ones that we get for these people that are out there. We also map out where these high-utilizers are occurring. We actually use heat maps. And surprisingly, and I double-checked with the gentleman that did it today, for some reason, 21215 comes up high with this. We've got to research a little further and figure out what we can do to try to reduce it in that area. But we're really into the weeds with what we can do and try to link people with services that takes on these unnecessary responses. Some of the future things that we're talking about doing with population health, one, there was discussions about potentially partner up with the health as well and doing some needle exchange as necessary. Telemedicine, I told you, that's coming, that's coming very soon, within months. Once we get approval from the Board of Health, we have to train, then we have to get a Champions, and we'll do a trial. We have iPads ready to go. It's actually, they'll be able to go in and link a physician via a HIPAA-compliant FaceTime. And they can actually go as far as send prescriptions to a CVS or Rite Aid or something like that. We're looking at buprenorphine, as I talked about earlier. We're also doing some additional partnerships. We're already partnering a lot with BPD, Health Department and BCRI. We're trying to improve those. And then we're also looking at things we can build for, like going to alternative destinations. And the next is Dr. Loner.
I will try to be brief here. We know that clinical metrics are my favorite, but I'm just going to illustrate the high points. And certainly, please stop me if you have any questions. So this is the public dashboard, but you can see that the public dashboard does not go into the granular detail, but simply states that for this period, obviously, we're increasing our incidences, and the upward trend is obviously summative. So we keep an eye on that to basically look at issues like capacity to ensure 988, which is run by BCRI, has the ability to do that. This is what I find very interesting. So every two weeks, we have a multidisciplinary call with Departments of Health, 911. And what we're seeing, if you look basically, there's April 15th is the last point, and there's a dotted line up there. Most of the calls that come in for behavioral health are unable to be diverted. Now, you may look at this and say, oh, this is kind of a bad trend. But what this means is that we're actually improving. If you were to look at when we started a year and a half ago, almost 100% of the calls were ineligible because patients wanted to go to the hospital, patients refused BCRI, patients had been to BCRI before. So that dotted line, getting it down to 75% is actually more positive. And the other encouraging thing is as we onboard that mental health clinician in the 911 center, I'm hoping that more of these calls will be able to be diverted because the key thing here is linkage, whether we're talking about opiate response, whether we're talking about high utilizers, it's making sure they get the care they need. The challenge is, once the call hits 911, as we've said so many times, already, the resources are there. And the least flexible point at 911 is when the ambulance is already dispatched. So that's a cycle which I think we need to break. In terms of the other stuff here, we'll move forward from our, oh, there we go. So I can talk a little bit about clinical metrics. The clinical metrics, suffice it to say, are things that we track. As a EMS system, if you look at high-performance EMS systems, there are key clinical components such as stroke, cardiac arrest, ST elevation, myocardial infarction. These are conditions that are immediate life threats. The good news with these is that, I think especially with stroke, our clinicians tend to recognize and check the boxes by documenting things like blood glucose. So these are trends that we look at in near-real time to enable us to make changes to our 911 system. Our cardiac arrest metrics, we'll talk about in a little bit more detail. The cardiac arrest metrics talk about what type of care do we perform for some of the sickest patients? And I'm happy to state that those graphs are rather standard in terms of how we manage those patients' airway, how we make sure that we breathe for them correctly. So again, clinical metrics are part of, I think, a 911 system that is engaged in some very busy and responses to sick calls. There is an opportunity, when we look at the ST-segment myocardial infarction, this is an area where there is improvement, and I think this directly relates to the burden on the EMS system. And where I would say this is relevant, for example, is there's something called Mission Lifeline, which actually will give EMS systems an award if they can get to a scene within a certain amount of time, obtain an EKG within a certain amount of time. This year, unfortunately, we missed the mark, and I think that's a lot due to the 911 utilization. And the reason why I bring this up is that if your 911 system is responding to everything that is an emergency, and we treat everything as if it's an emergency, the time-sensitive[1769.88] the time-sensitive calls are going to have to wait. And so if you look at something like this, we clearly see an impact where we weren't able to get to the scene within a certain time period. Now, fortunately, we meet metrics on the back end. We do track patients that go to the hospital, and we're very blessed in Baltimore City to have many heart attack centers. But I think what this metric shows me as a medical director is, we, no surprise to this knowledgeable council and esteemed audiences, we need to do, I think, a more focused job on the dispatcher forms, so we can identify those high-priority calls. When we talk about CARES metrics, this basically is a database where we compare ourselves to national benchmarks. This actually talks about, and kudos to our 911 personnel, we actually get the call out the door fairly rapidly. So if you call 911, and there is a patient who is not breathing, our 911 specialists are tasked with identifying this and calming somebody down and sending the call out within ideally 90 seconds, ideally shorter, and we're meeting national benchmarks with this. This data is from, this data is from January to March. Now, we also look at survival rates, and this is something where I think this kind of brings this home. So these are survival rates that are easy, I think, to understand. This is something that is also publicly accessible. If you look at overall survival of cardiac arrest, this is somebody who is not breathing and they have a heart attack. Overall survival to discharge is fairly low. In Baltimore City, we were 6.4% for the period. Howard County was 7%. Now, you might say, so that's great. We're on par with Howard County. So it's good that our overall rates are where they are. The challenge, though, and if you delve into this a little bit deeper, and this goes back to what we talked about earlier, is that we really have an opportunity for bystander CPR. So if you look at the rates with which our community engages with bystander and hands-only CPR, they are far below other jurisdictions. So if we get there, and the police, I have to say, are excellent. The police are very much engaged. They do go to all the non-breathing calls, but the bystander CPR rate in Baltimore City has been about 20% for several years. And so this, in my opinion, from the medical director, only speaking personally, is a huge area of focus. And you might ask why that is, and I would argue because the majority of our arrests are not people that are quote-unquote "having heart attacks." They're overdosed. And so we have a lot of people that are busy, quite honestly, administering naloxone to people that are down. The naloxone thing has gone off, the pendulum has swung to the point where we have people in cardiac arrest that are getting 16 milligrams of naloxone, but we're not doing things such as CPR. And you can imagine there are stigma, there's bias. It's really challenging to get somebody to do this, versus if you look at other places, the bystander intervention rate is a lot higher, about 40%. So I think this is a big focus for us, because I'd like to see those rates come up. Now, as you know, we're very transparent, but I also want to focus on one positive thing here, which I haven't seen before. So if in Baltimore City, for the period of January through March, if the arrest was witnessed, and you were in a shockable rhythm, this was the first time I have ever seen that we had 80% survival rate. Now, that's only five of the overall arrests that occurred, but sometimes the system does work. And we've worked very diligently with the police dispatch, and I think there's lots of other things to talk about in budget season. How do we, in other words, how do we make sure that happens? Other communities have things like PulsePoint, which is where if a cardiac arrest goes off, you can get an alert sent to your cellular phone. But I just wanted to basically spend a little bit of time in talking about the cardiac arrest survival rates, because not all of the news is bad. And that's, the 80% is somewhat astounding to me. I haven't seen that. So that is the end of my clinical metrics. I know there's a lot of information. I just wanted to say personally, sometimes when we are engaged in City Stat, it is a very good forum to make sure there's transparent reporting. I appreciate the opportunity to delve into a little bit more detail here, to get into the nuances and to figure out strategic planning. I wanted to really welcome Deputy Chief Johnson. Thanks, Kim Washington, Chief Matt. So that's all I had for population health. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really helpful. It makes me sort of wonder a couple of things. So we compare it to Prince George's, and we've compared it to Howard County. I wonder if that intervention rate is different in cities, and if we looked at like Philly or DC or otherwise?
Urban environments have lower bystander intervention rates. We've got to get over that stigma and work towards it. I mean, I'm happy to report that the outreach of hands-only CPR to date, they were able to train 6,568 people through April. So they're getting out there. We've just got to bring those numbers. The bigger events that are coming up right now is when they have the best success, AFRAAM, different places like that.
My thought here is, I definitely think training's important. Just knowing how to do CPR effectively is super important. But I, also, my thought here is just the sort of the design of suburban areas versus urban areas, and the people who may be standing there may not know the person, as opposed to, in many suburban areas, they may work with that person or so-and-so forth. So that may be one of the sort of different factors that you may experience in an urban area, which is why I was curious about like Philly, DC, so-and-so forth.
So we have the data on some of those jurisdictions. Baltimore is in the lower end of those jurisdictions, because there are things that are, places that are urban. I can tell you Seattle is a little bit urban, certainly not as Baltimore, but their bystander intervention rate is upwards of 50 to 60%. So there is a big, where I see the light through the clouds over there is there is a lot of outreach you can do in terms of that stigma, because we've done surveys, especially in Baltimore City, where we talk about why, and there's a fear of liability. There's the issue of not knowing people. But it is possible. Though urban jurisdictions are lower, I think with a combined campaign that looks at outreach, and that's not only, we, fire departments, as much as I would love to, we can't own this entirely, because it's about, and I think we were having another discussion last time, about schools, places of work, because if you look at the demographics, many of the witnessed arrests occur in buildings, occur in workplaces, and in the family homes. And so I think there is an opportunity to at least move the needle more than the 20th percentile, but you're absolutely correct in your analysis of the urban jurisdiction and how that reflects a lower rate.
Interesting. Councilwoman, Councilman, any questions?
I do.
Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the question that I have is that, so pretty soon, I think, within the next two months, Turning Point, which is a big opioid clinic that serves many of Baltimore's population, is soon going to be probably closing down, and those patients need, or ought to be going somewhere. And my question to you is, do we have anything like set in place, or do you even know about Turning Point, possibility of closing down, and that those patients may need somewhere to go? And if you guys are prepared to handle that capacity of patients that are getting services from that location?
So that was, that occurred, I can't remember how many months ago, there was a point where they were worried that Turning Point was going to be shut down. And what happens is, we collaborate with the Office of Emergency Management, the Health Department, as well as the Fire Department, to link those people that are being treated with places like that to closer areas. We had a bunch of plans in place. I wasn't aware it was going to happen again, but we're going to have to circle back and do the same thing we did the last time.
Yeah, so it's been conversations. So whatever information I have, I'll make sure you guys get it in advance, so you can be aware.
Thank you for bringing that up. I personally was not aware of that. There is the GBRICS forum, where fire department's representation is there. I'll make sure that's brought up, because that's going to be a, that's going to be a concerning impact on our services, because linkage is already a challenge. So certainly, I can follow up with the Director of BHSB at our next stabilization meeting, and the GBRICS meeting. I was not aware of that, so thank you, Councilman.
Another question. Are you guys, are you reaching out to like the behavioral health operations to find out if there's any clinicians that are worthy to help you guys in the Baltimore City Police, excuse me, Fire Department, when it comes to social services in reference to like therapy and things of that nature?
So we are part of the expansion with population health. They also brought in a couple of community health workers. The Fire Department is very good at moving people. We're very good at treating people. We're not very good at social working type stuff. There are people that have expertise in that area. That's the people we're bringing into the Operations Center, to be able to address those day-to-day things. With the true behavioral outreach, we're working primarily with BHSB as well as BCRI with that partnership. That's as far as we went with that, the social work part. We've learned a lot of lessons through mobile integrated healthcare and our exposure with the social work departments. The key with us is not to own patients, but to link patients with the right resource. The thing with us being able to go over the entire city is we can link into one of the four or five major systems. Hospitals are designed for a lot of those carryover programs. Our job is to get, you know, Chairman Conway linked in with the right hospital where he lives, where he's with the right system and the right program. That's where some of those social work, community health workers can assist us, to get into the right program.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate always the attention to detail, the, you know, ability to come with data and facts that can help inform the conversation. You guys are always a pleasure to have this conversation with. So thank you. This hearing is in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.